There we go, now we're ready. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July sixteenth, twenty twenty five Board of Education meeting for the Cog High School District. The Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Ms. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Decker.
Here.
Mr. Sujak.
Here, by present and absent. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to the tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues, and anyone having an interest in the actions of the Board may participate during that portion of the meeting. And if so, please identify yourself on the sign-in sheet. Please rise for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Dobbins.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Decker, is there any discussion? During none, Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Decker.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Ms. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Sujak.
Aye, motion passes five zero, moving on to comments from the public, there aren't any, moving on to section four, Treasurer's Business.
Thank you, Mr. Sujaki, just a few items tonight for approval as per items four A, five A through five B.
Entertain a motion for those items, please.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Dobbins.
Second.
Second by Ms. Etter, any discussion?
Just to point out-
Treasurer, actually, for discussion.
Just to point out a few things, five A, we only have one purchase order over five thousand on the agenda tonight, that's going to be on our lead sheet for SC Strategic Solutions, that's our SCBU software for requisitions, time clock system, check printing receipts, fiscal twenty-six, eleven thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars. It's been working well for us over the years that we've had that.
I appreciate the comments and the feedback, thank you.
Five B would be our agreement with the Auditor of State's Office for their local government service department to compile the annual financial statements for our school district for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, fiscal twenty-five, at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, four hundred unless amendments needed for additional time. They've been doing it for the past number of years since I've been here, they do a fantastic job, and we're happy that they have time to do it, so. Five C is the approval of a recommendation from District Legal Counsel, so motion to approve District Legal Counsel, friends of McIntyre and C to use an appraiser, Robert, what's his last name, Majulik, at a cost not to exceed nine thousand dollars to assist defending property values at the Board of Provisions, and his logic, if you click on that attachment, is provided in that email. Five D is a then and now, we just have one for graphic source, and that was for the spring two thousand twenty-five newsletters, three thousand, one hundred, twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Item five E is just to approve the return of advances, so we had Board approved advances back on June twenty-fifth, so we started with zero, we transferred from the general fund to three different five hundred level funds, so the money was sitting in those five hundred level funds, and now what we're doing is we're transferring back today from the five hundred level funds back to general fund, so we equal zero. And those are the items I have for approval tonight.
Okay, any questions or further discussion on those items? Hearing none, Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Ms. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Sujak.
Aye, motion passes five zero, section seven, Treasurer, discussion and comments.
Just a few items tonight for comments, so that's our fiscal year-end reminder that I had on the screen, and all those items I turned in by July eleventh, so we turned in all final revisions of revenues and appropriations for fiscal year twenty-five, our beginning unencumbered fund balance, and revisions to fiscal twenty-six estimated revenues to the county, along with our temporary appropriations for fiscal twenty-six that we approved a couple of four years ago. Item B, we had closed fiscal year twenty-five, so I just would like to thank Kathy Martin, our Assistant Treasurer, and Yulix Rodriguez, our HR and payroll specialist, for all their great work on another successful fiscal year-end close, they really do a great job, they do the bulk of it, so, you know, cheers to closing another fiscal year, so we started a new one, fiscal twenty-six. We're in the weird spot where I'm still looking back at prior year, we have a current year coming up, so I start forgetting where I'm at sometimes. Item seven C, there's a new USAS manual, so the prior manual was from two thousand thirteen, so we have one in two thousand twenty-five, so more than ten years for an update, so it's a bit more challenging this year because as we're beginning fiscal twenty-six, and it takes anywhere from a week to two weeks to turn all the requisitions that are in the system to purchase orders, along with populating all the budget amongst all the accounts that we have, so we have two hundred requisitions in the system to be turned into POs, and then we also have more than a thousand, you know, account codes I go through and just add to budgets, so with this new USAS manual, I just have to go through and make sure any changes that they have in there were compliant with, so there's a lot of cross-checking and I'm going back and forth. And then item D, we have our HB ninety-six timeline, I figured I would keep this up just as things continue to progress, so I tried to separate it into months, so if we look at our public content, back on April first, and it wasn't a joke, that's where Matt Young got notice that the House was proposing a twenty-five percent cash balance carryover provision in HB ninety-six, and I'm not sure if you want to talk a little back on that day, how quickly we saw that.
Oh yeah, I mean, as soon as I got it, I emailed you, you responded, we contacted the Alliance of High Quality Education, who was actually in the chamber listening to testimony, called as soon as we came out, really hadn't heard much about it at that particular point, you know, from there, our advocacy work really started because it was, you know, I can tell you, and even if there's a veto override, fiscal twenty-six looks a lot different should there be a carryover provision, and, you know, he's going to go through the timeline, and we appear to have, you know, dodged, you know, the carrier provision for now, but we'll find out next week, twenty-first and twenty-second is when the House and Senate, they're going to be meeting to discuss key overrides around property tax reform, so right now it's not part of the conversation, but it doesn't mean, as we've talked before, an override can happen now, or it can happen anytime during the budget, so they could wait until there's a new governor in place, and then they could override that veto, so there's no limitation, anytime during the life of this budget, they can go and override any of his vetoes.
Yeah, I thought I, I'm pretty sure I read somewhere that it's the, it's the end of the governor's term, that it's, you know, or is that when the budget ends?
Budget ends.
The budget would end in a full two years, so.
Yeah, we were told.
I read somewhere it was eighteen months, it was essentially the end of twenty-six.
Yeah, we were told by the Alliance.
The Alliance said that?
Yeah, but we will double check it.
I don't recall where I saw it, I mean, I saw it published somewhere, it wasn't rumor mill.
Yeah, we'll double check that, but it's, it was something that was kind of a shock to a lot of us, that it's not off the table, just after, even after it goes into effect in October.
That's the end of session next year.
End of session next.
End of twenty twenty-six.
Calendar year.
Yeah, because then they go into the spring proposing the next budget bill.
Yeah.
In twenty-seven.
Right, so it would be the end of twenty-six, right.
Yeah.
So April first, you know, we were made aware of the twenty-five percent cash balance provision, we knew what that would mean for our district financially, as well as all other school districts in Ohio, so we got on the phone right away, then on Wednesday, April second, the day after, we had emailed, and there's a lot, there are other things that we're going to add to this too, so this is just a few items that we have, April second, we emailed the entire Senate and House of Representatives and their aides to express our concerns regarding HB ninety-six. Less than two weeks later, on April fourteenth, we were made aware that the House of Representatives adjusted the proposed cash balance carryover provision from twenty-five percent to thirty percent for HB ninety-six, and then on that same day, we, I emailed seventeen members of the Office of Governor Mike DeWine to express our concerns regarding HB ninety-six. Then April twenty-second, Tuesday, again, we emailed the entire Senate and House of Representatives and their aides to express our concerns regarding HB ninety-six, and in between, we have phone calls that are made as well as we go along. Friday, May ninth, now moving into May, we attended a meeting, Matt Young and myself, with Senator Jerry Serena, who's the Chair of the Senate Finance Committee, along with other superintendents and Treasurers up in Mentor, that was organized by Mentor Schools, so we had Kirtland there, we had Solen was there, and a number of other schools as well, Riverside, I want to say, so we were able to express our concerns in person to Senator Serena. Tuesday, May thirteenth, again, we emailed the entire Senate and House of Representatives and their aides to express our concerns regarding HB ninety-six. May twenty-third, on Friday, we submitted testimony, Matt and myself, to the Senate Finance Committee in opposition to HB ninety-six. On May twenty-eighth, we again emailed the entire Senate and House of Representatives and their aides to express our concerns regarding HB ninety-six, then on Friday, May thirtieth, Matt and myself, we testified in person, we have the video, and I played that at the Ohio State House.
Fantastic.
To the Senate Finance Committee in opposition to HB ninety-six, so that was in May, and then in June, on Tuesday, June third, we were made aware of the Senate's proposed fifty percent cash balance carryover provision in HB ninety-six, so higher than the Houses, but still not high enough. Wednesday, June eleventh, the Board of Education adopted a resolution opposing the cash carryover balance provision in HB ninety-six, and we sent that to the entire Senate and House of Representatives and the Governor's Office and their aides, and Matt, you had gotten a call just this week of somebody that had saw that just recently, and I had gotten emails too when I sent that, but you're even getting calls still.
Yeah, well, because this week, with, once we got word that there was going to be a veto override effort, I emailed twelve Republican House of Representative members, not, not in our district, separately expressing my concern about a veto override, you know, the loss of local control, devastating school districts', you know, reserves, and essentially saying that this is not, this is a short-term fix that's going to create long-term problems, it's not a short-term fix for a long-term problem. I think, Mr. Dobbins, I told you, it's the, and all your math teachers appreciate this when they ask you, would you take a million dollars today or a penny doubled every day for thirty-one days? Well, penny doubled, you know, for thirty-one days is over ten million dollars, but everybody wants to jump at the quick fix, and that's kind of the analogy I've been using, and that was the, when I emailed the Governor when I was on vacation, I emailed him urging the vetoes, when he overrode the veto, or when he vetoed, I emailed him thanking him, and then when we got word that, you know, there was going to be this effort, I emailed the twelve strategic representatives who might, who might be more education, public education friendly than maybe some of the others, so we'll see where it goes, we have since then seen the cash carryover come off as a targeted item, there are still three items that, you know, aren't necessarily detrimental to Cog High Schools, but we, yes, we have to be selfish, and we have to be very selfish first, but you have to look at the bigger picture, and what this is meaning for the whole six hundred and, you know, seven school districts, or six hundred and ten school districts in Ohio as a whole, and no matter what happens, you know, in the next couple of weeks, the landscape is changing, if it hasn't already changed, and we need to be out in front of it, we need to be as proactive as we can, work together, be on the same team, rather than being reactive and wondering, you know, what comes next, try to control our fate as much as possible.
After that Board Resolution that was passed back on June eleventh, we come to June twenty-fifth, and we were made aware of the Conference Committee's proposed forty percent compromise, so the Senate and House compromised between fifty and thirty at forty percent, and that was the number that carried forward up until Monday, June thirtieth, where Governor DeWine vetoed item specifically number sixty-three, which was the forty percent cash balance carryover in the budget bill, HB ninety-six, at eleven fifteen that Monday. And then Wednesday, July second, we thanked the Governor, thanked him multiple times for the vetoes impacting K through twelve education, and, you know, that kind of rolls into item E, as Matt was saying, you know, the veto overrides, there are three that are proposed for Monday, July twenty-first, but they could, you know, bring up another, a fourth one as well, we just don't know at this point. But those three, as Matt was saying, none are good for school districts, but the cash carryover in particular for our school, as well as many, many other schools in Ohio, is detrimental, and that was our focus for everything, so we have that resolution later in the agenda that was put together, that's on here too, that was written that we're just, you know, reinforce our support of Governor DeWine's vetoes, the cash carryover balance, that specific one, in opposition to any legislative veto. Any question?
If there are no other questions or comments, I do want to, again, this does, in my opinion, bears repeating, that I do want to acknowledge Mr. Muccio and Mr. Young's outstanding efforts throughout this process to stay informed, keep us informed, keep the community informed, and then to reach out on behalf of the community to our elected officials to make our case, you gentlemen did this in a way that I certainly could have, couldn't have, and I very much appreciate it, and I think that the community, to the extent that they aren't aware, that they become more aware, I think that they owe you two a debt of gratitude, so thank you.
I'd love to echo publicly those sentiments as well, appreciate your tenacity, I guess is the word for this, and, you know, just sticking with it and being our best advocate.
Thank you, and we, you know, we're all one team, and, you know, once we started getting emails back from the House and Senate, as well as phone calls and voicemails, then we saw the impact it was having, and we've been working together in conjunction with other school districts, so there are others that we've been talking to all along the way, our neighbor's school districts, you know, just in Cog County, you know, close by, so, you know, all the superintendents and Treasurers recognize, you know, what drastic, you know, reform this is, and however, everybody, you know, still supports, you know, property tax reform that, you know, recognizes, you know, just what's required for public school districts in the state of Ohio, so if we can somehow do everything together, I think that's best for all sides of this, which is our goal. That's all I have to say.
Again, thank you very much, gentlemen, for everything that you've done, I'm sure all, all five of us, and the entire district owes you a debt of gratitude, so thank you.
It even feels like with everything we're doing that we still, you know, feel like we need to do more, more.
Well.
Well, Mr. Young made a comment about being proactive, and I think that's a pretty astute observation.
And it's hard too, because as you go along the way, you don't know what works, it's, you know.
Well, we might be able to conclude that but for your voices, I think we know what the outcome, that it may have been far more onerous than what it appears to be, at least at this eleventh hour, so if we hadn't said anything, or you hadn't done anything to lead the charge, who knows where this would have ended up, probably not where we're at now.
Right, thank you. Okay, well, thank you. Anything else on Treasurer's Business, moving on to section eight then, Superintendent?
This might be the longest consent agenda I've ever had, so I apologize. So we have items A, sorry, eight, A through C, nine, A and B, ten, A through I, and eleven, A through M, all those items for consideration.
Okay, accept a motion for those items, please. Ms. Kraus?
Decker.
And second by Ms. Etter, is there any, I'll let Mr. Young go through the list.
Sure, okay, under the general business, so the first two items go together, the first is a resolution for me to declare that student transportation to private education is impractical for our school district, all right, so that's the first resolution that we're required by law to pass, the second resolution then says because it's impractical, we are going to pass a resolution so we can pay our families to transport their students in lieu of transportation, so that's the payment in lieu of transportation for the second piece, so both of those are required, and then you will see the contracts with the individual families listed there as well in the public content section, okay? Letter C, this is Class of two thousand twenty-five has requested to use funds for their twentieth class reunion, so that item covers that. Nine, A and B, these are two resignations, you know, while I'm very happy for, for people to make decisions that are best for their professional and personal life, I really hate to lose outstanding individuals, the first, official resignation of Holly Thrasher, who's going to be going to the Career Center, has been an outstanding school counselor for us for the last five years, was really the whole package, we're very, you know, hopeful that Mrs. Neider is going to do just as well, she was also outstanding, who's going to come in to replace her, but Holly will be missed, but she's just down the road, and I'm sure we'll have interactions with her as our students attend the Career Center. Second is a resignation of Mrs. Lindsay Andreski, alumnus of the district, got her first job here, has done an outstanding job in sixth grade, probably, when you look at some of one of our most successful teams in the school the last five years, our sixth grade team has just been phenomenal, you had Linda Wilson, Lindsay Andreski, and Nate Breck, and, you know, Lindsay is, is taking this journey to Strongsville, which is where she lives, she's an outstanding teacher, has been a great leader, and has a lot of, a lot of potential, and as I, I told her personally and wrote a recommendation letter for her over the weekend, I have no doubt that she's going to continue to rise and empower other people to rise as well, so best of luck to these two individuals. Number ten, all right, we have the approval, the employment of the Student Engagement Specialist, this is Jordan Durazio, we are repurposing his educational aide or paraprofessional position to create this position that's going to allow us to use his talents in a way that is going to connect with our, not just our athletes, but our, all of our co-curricular students, and support some of the things that we're wanting to do from a student leadership and engagement standpoint, so, but again, this is the repurposing of one position for another position. Letter B, this is a cafeteria member, Mary Ann Omschneider, she was, she was here before, I looked at the fiftieth anniversary brochure, and her name was, she had a different last name, but she was, I think she was a cleaner back in those days, so, come back around thirty-five years later, she's back at Cog High Schools thirty-seven years later, very enthusiastic, she lives right down the street, it's great to have people in the community to come back, but that's going to help our need, as you recall, we're going to have a breakfast program that we were either required to implement, or we were going to be required to tell and notify our community that we were refusing to feed children who qualify for a free breakfast program, so obviously, the, you go for what's best for kids, but this is going to help with our overall needs there. Bus drivers are always, always in high demand, Bill Nichols, William Nichols, is also somebody who lives in the community, we're going to train to be a bus driver, and we'll start as a van driver, he'll be at BA step, sorry, he'll be at step one, and the cafeteria will be at step six. We have two long-term substitute teachers, Cass Paniger is going to, once again, be the long-term sub for Holly McPherson in our art program at the middle school and high school, and we have Dan Durazio, a former geometry teacher and coach, I think he's, he's a coach again, right, Mr. Martin, you've talked him into coming back, but he was an outstanding geometry teacher, and for the two months or so that Jordan Satter will be out, because they are expecting their first child, Mr. Durazio is going to fill in, so it's tremendous to have, you know, somebody of that quality to come in and teach our mathematics. Letter F, this is the approval of a mentor for a new Chase employee, so we hired a new administrative assistant for our co-curriculars, and so by contract, we have to place a mentor with that person, so Megan Schwab, who had held that position years back, is going to be the mentor, that's at a stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars. Letter G is to approve the extended time for our new school counselor, Abby Neider, so that she has an opportunity to work with Mrs. Thrasher and prepare for the upcoming school year, again, that high school counseling job is a very big job, and it's fairly important. Our last two, these two exempt employees actually qualify for a continuing contract by law, so this is the time to do that appropriately, so that would be Matthew Hartman goes from a limited contract to a continuing contract, and Tracy Deal goes from a limited contract to a continuing contract, they were both hired prior to November second of twenty-eighteen and should have been on continuing contracts probably around the year twenty-twenty-one, so this corrects, corrects that, so. Going into letter eleven, this is the approval agreement of LLA therapy to provide therapy services for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, as I had mentioned, you know, we, when we went, we have increased our services with LLA by decreasing, Mr. Burick, we decreased, is it SBC, who was a? Which stands for what, because we're the?
Exclusion behavior.
Yeah, yeah, too many acronyms in our profession, so when you look at what we were doing a couple of years ago, we've now consolidated LLA, and I believe that the total amount with LLA is less than it was with the two, I think, three companies back then, wasn't it?
Some outplacements were reduced over the years, so.
Yep.
We're always kind of working out with Treasurer's Department, seeing how to be more willing for our clients, so we're spending less money and giving more services, but at the end of the day, we're pretty inclined to do it.
Letter B, this is the agreement with Belfair, JCB, or Monarch School, we have one student currently, I think when we came here ten years ago, do we have nine students who were outplaced? Now we're down to one student who's outplaced, and this is the agreement for that student to be educated elsewhere. Letter C, this is our annual agreement for audiology and hearing impaired services, not to exceed twelve thousand dollars, we also have our annual agreement for visual impaired services, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, both of those are with the Northeast Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. Letter E, under number eleven, this is our annual agreement for College Credit Plus, purchasing of books and materials with Cleveland State University. Letter F, this is our agreement with Acco Brands Corporation for equipment maintenance for our laminating machines that we have in the high school and in the elementary school, I believe those costs were pretty low, like around, also around twelve hundred dollars, I believe, yeah, twelve hundred and fourteen dollars for the year. Letter G, this is the agreement with Aerolifts for stair lift, stair lift installation over at the elementary school, it's under twelve thousand dollars to, to have that, we had explored that over the last three years, as we've had some students and staff members who have required, you know, some type of transportation from one floor to another, we have an elevator that's not as, always as reliable as, as you would like them to be, this is something we've looked into, and now it's a necessity to get that done.
If I may ask, where is it going to be?
I believe it's going to be in the back hallway by where the art room is, cafeteria to the art room, that back stairwell.
Yeah, okay, I was curious.
Yeah, it'll be a, kind of like a chair that goes up a track.
That's what I figured, yeah.
Letter H, this is an agreement with Current Surfaces Incorporated for track repainting.
It's the shape of a nice mounted line, starting from painting.
It's a, we want to run a top-notch program when all those schools come in for our district meet, for the Cog Relays, and the George Gross Invitational, and things like that, so we want to make sure that, at his request, that gets done, it's seventy-five hundred dollars, I think the last time we did this, it was around eighteen thousand dollars, but they power washed the entire track, so I guess power washing a track costs eleven thousand dollars. Letter I, this is approval of the cancellation of Securitas Electronic Security, as we're going to be going to a different security system, it's no longer necessary to have two companies overseeing our systems, so the cost of cancellation was four hundred and thirty dollars, to get out of the contract early. Letter J, this is the annual dues for participation in the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding lawsuit, right, this is the lawsuit that we joined to fight the voucher program, as you recall back last- As you recall, back last month in Franklin County, the judge ruled against the voucher program, but allowed it to continue because it's a very complicated matter, I think is what the judge said. We know that's going to get appealed. The people in the legislature that are in support of the voucher program seem very, very confident and not worried that this is going to uphold. They think by the time it gets to the Supreme Court of Ohio, it will easily get overturned and they'll get their voucher program. So, and from there, it would probably go then to the federal level, right? Keep fighting it. But that's at fifteen hundred and forty-two dollars. All right, letter K, we're getting there, almost there. This is the agreement that we need to make sure we get signed and off, you know, by tomorrow for our prom. Yeah, we'll make sure we meet it down. We spoke to the people at Botanical Gardens. We want to make sure that prom two thousand twenty-six is secure because it can be really, really tough this time of year to find a location for next year, believe it or not. Some people are already working on two thousand twenty-seven, so. Letter L, this is to approve the agreement with Live Touch that sets the cost of the yearbooks for elementary. Now, when I emailed the board over the weekend about this particular item, it was at seventeen seventy-five, it's now at eighteen twenty-five. The reason is, they estimate how many yearbooks that we are going to sell. If you cross the hundred and fifty-one yearbook threshold, then that cost is seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents. But if you don't hit the hundred and fifty-one, let's say you had a hundred and twenty-five, the school is required to purchase the difference. Now last, you know, we sell somewhere between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty-five elementary yearbooks annually. So I asked, you know, for, you know, a difference of fifty cents, let's, let's get in a range that we know we're going to clear. Most fourth and fifth graders buy yearbooks and we have seventy kids, sixty-five kids each, that's a hundred and thirty, I'm pretty sure we'll clear it. So just wanted to make sure that we had a number that we could for sure hit, that's not, you know, out of the price range of our youngsters. And then letter M, this is our motion to authorize the two of us to enter into an agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for our Title III or our Limited English Proficient Funds. We get under a thousand dollars and I believe we are required then, because we get such little money, to enter into a consortium. And we have done that every year since I've, since I've been back for five years, because I worked closely on the title funds. And I'm sure it was done long before that too, so. That's, that's it, yeah. There's a lot there.
That's all?
Any questions about any of those or comments?
Questions, comments, discussion on any items? I think they were all well presented and of course, we had quite a bit of information ahead of the meeting and thank you for that, so we could understand before we got here what was going on. So, during nothing else, Treacher, please call the rule.
Ms. Prowse? Mrs. Zetter?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Scheck?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Any further discussion, section thirteen? Superintendent, discussion and comments?
Yeah, a few things here. As Mr. Muccio mentioned, I did get a phone call yesterday from the office of Tracy Richardson out of Marysville, thanking me for my email that I had sent last week advocating to not override, you know, the governor's vetoes. So I was, it's always nice to get a call back from somebody. It was personal, and I had a conversation, had a minute and a half. Representative Richardson, you know, thank you, Representative Richardson, for at least taking the time to call back. That was great. Every year, I'm required to take a moment here to talk about some of our, some of our state funds. We have funds that involve student wellness and disadvantaged people impact aid. We have to have a plan in place as we reconcile this money at the end of every year. We have to have a plan in place and one of the requirements is, is that I discuss this as a board meeting. So, and I'm going to give you just the quick rundown of it. You know, the plan outlines the utilization of our student wellness and success funds and the disadvantaged people impact aid for fiscal year twenty-five. The funds aim to enhance student well-being through various support services and collaboration with community partners. The summary is intended for posting on our district website and presentation to the Board of Education. This year, for our disadvantaged people impact aid, we spent, we were required to spend thirty-two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and, and we spent just over that. For the student wellness and success funds, we were required to spend thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars, which we spent, again, just above that. You know, our goals are to service our vulnerable student populations, provide interventions for them in things like special education services, dropout prevention, mental health services, school safety measures, instructional technology. You know, we're also looking at partnering, you know, with qualified mental health providers using evidence-based therapeutic interventions that address trauma, behavioral challenges, emotional barriers to learning, and ensuring that students receive the support necessary for academic success and overall well-being. And, you know, I thank Mr. Muccio, I thank Mr. Burick for taking the time to not just work in developing this plan and reconciling these state grant funds, you know, as we close out the year, but also just recognizing the types of programs that are out there and bringing those services into the district to serve our students. And we talk about academics, 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 but that's, that's only one part of the story when a student walks into our, our district. You know, it's, there's so much more that we do, so much where we are able to do and fortunate to and blessed to do and this, this funding certainly helps us with that. So to the two of you, thanks for helping me reconcile this, but, you know, approximately seventy thousand dollars went to providing these services to our students this year and it's something we've done every year and we will continue as long as the money is available. These are state funds, so they're, they're, they're maybe safer than some of your federal funds, which is another conversation, so. So I was required to talk about that, so we fulfilled that, that's great. Again, July twenty-first and twenty-second, we have the House and the Senate likely meeting to look at some veto overrides. We've got a resolution specifically about the cash carryover balance. Before you get to that, we, we did have a conversation, Mrs. Decker and, who was in, was it Mr. Dobbins, were you in the last?
Yes.
Yeah, agenda review. We, we were talking about, you know, should we go all in on, you know, a full, you know, resolution to support the governor and oppose the veto overrides, or should we be consistent in the, you know, the, the leadership of the board here said, hey, if we pass a resolution about the carryover, let's keep it to the carryover. Let's not, let's not go beyond what we had committed to. And I think that's a, a smart and prudent decision and, you know, Matt will probably, we will read the resolution here in a little bit, but thanks for the, the feedback on that. It was really important, I think, to help us draft that. The projects are going pretty well overall. You know, the hillside is nearing completion, they, they have some fencing to do, you know, and, and some minor things, like for example, there's a rut through the middle of the new asphalt behind, you know, the bandroom there. And we don't know if that was put there by a vehicle driving on top of it or if it was intention, potentially intentional, but right now it's a tripping hazard at a minimum and if it fills with water and freezes, it's a slipping hazard. So it's something that we're going to be meeting on Friday to reconcile.
Don't have to do that, right? Don't have to fix that contractor's network.
Well, it's going to get fixed. It's, the question is, is whether it was done by a vehicle or whether it was done by them. And that's what we have to kind of find out, so we have to do a little investigation because they did not, when they finished that pro, that part of the project on Monday, they didn't put up any barriers. And at least two vehicles drove back there. One was a school vehicle and one was a non-school vehicle. And it's really hard to determine exactly what happened. We talked to the company today and they're like, well, you know, I think Cooks, they're the ones that did the asphalt, that company called Cooks. They're like, well, they put a trench in there to kind of collect the water so it would drain properly. So we're like, so, what? So we're going to find that out, but it's minor, it's minor, it's, it's, it's coming along. They sought to do some backfilling on this north end and then put the fence in the south end. And there's a little bit of track repair they're going to have to do, they're paying for that because their, one large piece of equipment kind of slid down the hill, landed side, was it sideways on the track, I think? So there's a couple of areas that they're going to have to repair, they're paying for it, so. The fire system, yeah, they've run over five miles of wiring and that was before they even got to the basement or the pool area. And it's, it's impressive. They have a great team. Einheid is a tremendous, like, you talk about a team, I mean, they, they show up every day, they know what their job is, they communicate well with each other, they clean up after themselves, they ask questions, they're professional, friendly, just a great organization to work with. But they're, now they're starting to, starting to install some of the hardware around the school as well. So, you know, it's, it's great to see these two projects that we, you know, at least the hillside, we were talking, I think the first time we talked about this was the fall of twenty-one, really started talking about it in twenty-twenty-two and here we are in twenty-twenty-five, it's, it's, it's tremendous.
When we're asked to nominate or recognize a business in our school district, we should keep this.
Yeah, Einheid, they're, they're local.
Because they're local and, and it would be.
It's a great idea.
It would be a nice recognition for them.
Yeah.
To thank them for the good work that they're doing.
Yeah. And they, you know, they work very closely with Paladin and, you know, Paladin's done a lot of work for us too. So, I mean, it's, it's great to have these, these local businesses, you know, really do quality work. The roofing projects, you know, we talked about the money we needed to set aside for the roofing projects, approximately three point three million dollars over the next three to four years, based on the TRIMCO analysis. We're going to be starting that process very soon because we, we have some roofing projects that can actually get done this fall, they're not invasive to the educational experience of our students or staff. And so look for that coming in August, where we'll likely have to take some board action on that to get that going.
But that's going to be the money that we set aside, right?
It's all PI money.
Yeah. The most of that's going to get taken care of.
Yep. Yeah. So, and those are the types of things we spoke about, you know, when we, when we were planning for the levy, you know, two years ago. The things that we discussed when we stood in front of the Senator Serino and the Finance Committee, you know, some school districts have needs and, you know, we're, I was just looking at our latest numbers, we're about sixty-eight percent locally funded plus an additional eighteen percent that comes from other revenue sources, which is pretty much coming locally as well. So we just don't get a lot in federal and state aid, so everything, almost everything we do is locally generated, which, again, we're grateful for that, we're grateful for the businesses, you know? Great for the businesses that provide of our local funding about seventy-five percent of that revenue to us. So it's tremendous, but that, that's going to be starting pretty soon too. I think that's, is there anything that I forgot that you can think of? Anything I forgot? Okay.
Mr. Young, I do have one question on the, the safety system that Einheid is working on with Paladin. Do you have any idea when that's going to become operational or activated?
So the fire alarm component should be ready, they're, they're pretty confident that's going to be ready before the staff opening day.
Oh, good.
The security component might take a little longer, but again, it's not, it's not as invasive and it's not as critical that it's up and operational because you do, still do have the older system in place.
Yeah, well, the security components are upgraded, there's some sensors. So we have sensors that are nearing end of life, so it's, it's a few kinds of.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's, that'll, that'll probably happen soon after school starts. Then we're working even to upgrade our, our PA system over here at the high school and middle school. Doesn't, it's an old system, it's an older archaic system and Paladin is somebody that has given us quotes to be able to do that as well, so. So, yeah, we're, we're, we're getting projects, we've had a couple of companies come in and look at our South Jim bleachers so that we can start getting quotes on that. Not that we're going to spend all this money, but you have to know what things cost so that you know how to prioritize. And all that becomes part of the communication plan and, you know, this is, as we've closed out the best committee for twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, we discussed that twenty-five, twenty-six is going to transition nicely into how do we start communicating about how we're spending our money with our finances as well as legislative changes that are potentially coming down the pike that are going to affect how your school district is funded. And, you know, we, we're working really strategically behind the scenes to, you know, try to anticipate, you know, that as much as possible as Matt, you know, has told me several times, you know, the way we need to go about doing business has to be different, but yet we don't want the quality of what we provide to suffer. And so that's a, you know, a great balancing act and, you know, strategic staffing, strategic hiring is all important. So we're working on all those, all those things, so.
Right. Thank you. Any other discussion, Superintendent Business? All right, moving on to section fifteen, board discussion and so forth. Any committee reports?
Fourteen, a resolution?
Fourteen, oh, I walked right over the top of that, thank you. Resolution, we have a resolution which I'm going to ask the, one of our administrators to read into the record, in support of Governor Mike DeWine's veto of the cash carryover balance provisions and in opposition to the legislative veto override, so.
All right. Again, it's a little wordy, but we went through it today and felt that this appropriately captures exactly what, what this board, our administration is aiming for here. So it says, whereas the Cogah Heights Board of Education passed a resolution on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five firmly opposing any legislation, including provisions within House Bill ninety-six, that would impose arbitrary limits on a school district's ability to maintain a prudent cash carryover balance, an essential tool for ensuring fiscal responsibility, educational continuity, and public trust. Whereas Governor Mike DeWine exercised sound judgment and leadership by vetoing the cash carryover balance provision contained within House Bill ninety-six, recognizing that such arbitrary limits would undermine districts' ability to maintain fiscal responsibility and educational continuity. Whereas Governor DeWine's veto message correctly identified that the proposed forty percent cash carryover would significantly limit the amount of funding that school districts can carry over year to year, resulting in more districts asking taxpayers to pass levies more often, which could very well exacerbate property tax increases instead of reducing them. Whereas the governor's veto protects the authority of locally elected school boards to manage their finances in accordance with the unique needs and circumstances of their communities, preserving the principle of local control that is fundamental to Ohio's educational governance. Whereas the House of Representatives has announced its intention to convene a special session to potentially override Governor DeWine's property tax-related vetoes, which could undermine responsible fiscal planning by school districts. Whereas while the initial override efforts scheduled for July twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five do not immediately target the cash carryover provision, the legislative notice indicates that other items may be considered at future scheduled sessions, leaving open the possibility of future override attempts on the carryover cap. And whereas the Cogah Heights School District recognizes that property tax reform requires thoughtful, balanced solutions that do not sacrifice educational excellence or fiscal stability and supports Governor DeWine's proposal to convene a working group to develop comprehensive property tax reforms. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cogah Heights School District Board of Education strongly supports and commends Governor Mike DeWine for his decisive leadership in vetoing the cash carryover balance provisions in House Bill ninety-six, which protects the financial stability and educational mission of Ohio's public school districts. Be it further resolved that the Cogah Heights School District Board of Education firmly opposes any attempt by the Ohio General Assembly to override Governor DeWine's veto on the cash carryover provisions, whether in the currently scheduled July twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five session or in any future legislative sessions, and urges all members of the House of Representatives and Senate to respect the governor's sound judgment and refrain from overriding these vetoes, recognizing that such override would harm public education and undermine local fiscal autonomy while supporting the governor's commitment to establishing a working group to develop comprehensive, balanced property tax reforms that provide meaningful relief to taxpayers without jeopardizing the funding and stability of Ohio's public schools. And a copy of this resolution be forwarded to members of the House of Representatives, the Senate, and the governor to emphasize our district's strong support for the governor's veto and our opposition to any legislative override of the cash carryover provision adopted the sixteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-five by the Cogah Heights Schools Board of Education.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion about this resolution before us? Thank you. Any discussion about this resolution before us?
Just another thank you for being our one voice in our attempt to keep, you know, what the governor did. Thank you for being our one voice in our attempt to keep things there now.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And the plan is to send this before the 21st meeting?
Sunday tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Do we need to sign anything personally?
No, we have the adopted at the bottom. So it says adopted as a team, the Caga Heights School Board of Education. So it's one voice, everybody's speaking and saying, okay, our school district.
I'll make the resolution that we accept this. Can we have a second, please? Second by Ms. Prowse. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Scheck?
Aye.
Ms. Prowse?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Ms., Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Town Member, for putting that together. Very, very well done.
An example of the proactiveness that you referred to earlier, Mr. Young and Mr. Muccio. Thank you.
Okay, now we can move to 15. Any committee reports, comments, board discussion? Another thing I'll mention is the ACTE, the, the Career Centers organization is having their annual get-together this week. So I will be in Columbus this coming week for their convention, Monday, Tuesday, and partially on Wednesday. And then I come back for the next meeting of the Career Center, which is Thursday morning at 8:00 in the morning. I don't remember why we chose that time. It wasn't high on my list, but that's our next meeting for the Career Center. And that's all I have for the Career Center at the moment. Okay. Hearing nothing else, we'll move on to 15, 16, future agenda items. Anyone?
Evaluations?
Uh, yes. That's not exactly a agenda. Well, yes, it is an agenda. We need to figure out when we are going to sit down and actually make the, the evaluations of our two administrators as a group. Do we want to just schedule that for after our next meeting? Do we want to do another special meeting like we did to put them together in the first place? What's our opinion here?
No, we said we were going to try to do it on August 6th unless it's a long meeting. Or there's a lot of, like, other.
We, we did talk about that, didn't we?
Yeah. I, that's what I remember. Because we got a meeting on August 6th, but if it's a big agenda, we might move to something else. Now.
We don't anticipate a big agenda on August 6th. I mean, this was.
All right.
I don't think we did a lot of stuff right before the start of the school year. I mean, I know this one had a few things. I know we approved a lot of, like, things for the school year, personnel and things like that as well. But do you, you don't anticipate that 6 o'clock meeting to be long?
I can look back at last year's.
Or what about you guys? How do you feel about, you know, staying longer?
It does.
Would you do this at a different day?
No.
How makes your schedules?
No, it works, it works for us.
Yeah, and that shouldn't, it's obviously not, not going to go as long as it did to write them in the first place. So that should go fairly quickly. August 6th would work, with me anyways. It'd work with everybody.
Sure.
I see a lot of nodding of heads. Yes. So could we add an executive session to that agenda, please? For the appropriate ORC code. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Future agenda?
You guys are good with us doing both those on one day?
That just means, yeah, somebody will have to wait an extra 15 minutes or so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
You guys figure that out then.
Yeah. Tell us which one you want to go first.
You can do mine in front of Mr. Muccio. It doesn't matter to me. I, we're, we're pretty much a team.
Okay. Anything else on future agenda? Okay, we'll do that on August 6th. 17, it should be noted, Board of Education members have received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting and have had considerable opportunity to study and ask questions. Upcoming board meetings, August 6th, we just discussed. August 20th, I will not be able to attend that meeting. I will be on vacation. So that one's yours.
Okay.
And then September 3rd at 6 o'clock. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the board, then can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
It's moved.
Moved by Mr. Dobbins.
Second.
Second by Ms. Decker. Is there any discussion? I wouldn't think so. Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Ms. Prowse? Mr. Scheck?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. It is, what time is it? 6:54, 6:55?